It's really cool to see more interworking.
Those are the things I love. I love that stuff.
Don't worry, I'm gonna have to put a calendar out. Calendar up.
I got this.
Fast thinking, slow thinking is another one that I have. And he talks about that. You get into your lazy brain and you can post through your day. But forcing yourself to do that and forcing yourself to think. All of that is a brain thing, so we all avoid it as much as we can. It's answerable.
Hi Carolyn.
So it's, and I was kinda like, it's that same thing. It's like, we need a force of habit.
Yeah.
Huh? No.
I needed, we needed, Jesus Christ.
Yeah.
Come close there.
Anybody look at the clock?
Shush now.
Sorry.
All right, everybody. Hello, hello, hello. Attention in council chambers. Attention, please. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll first do the city council roll call and then the finance advisory committee roll call. So Ruth, roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic. Favor. Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Six present. Do you want me to call your role?
Please call the role for us, Ruth.
McHill.
Here.
Neely.
Here.
Parch. Terazinski.
Here.
Washington. Three present.
All right, move on to item number B, approval of the agenda. I take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, a second.
Second.
All right, I'll have a motion, I'll do by Alderman Perkins and a second by alderwoman Larson. Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay, then moving on to agenda item C, public participation. I believe we have one, Mr. Ernell Brown. You can come up to the podium, introduce yourself and talk away. We usually keep it to about three minutes, though, Mr. Brown.
Hi, everybody. I don't know if everybody knows me, but I'm Ernell Brown, executive director of Sherona Foundation, a new nonprofit in DeKalb, Illinois. So if, if, if I can beg pardon for additional two minutes, I'd appreciate it. I had a lot to say. And I sat and I looked around the room. And all of those things went away. But the reason I was here is because this is the time where finances are spoken. And those finances are invested in various different ways. And with the person handling those finances, I know they're being put to good use. I've observed this man and I've got to know him and I definitely appreciate him now. But I'm still at a point where I'm concerned. I'm concerned because there's a lot of change in the community. But not a lot of awareness of the impact of that change in the future. I was here one time and I heard an environmental group come in here and, and give a presentation about butterflies. And that stuck with me. Because I've also been here and watched an entire church come in and give a presentation about people. The presentation about butterflies, butterflies was well received. But the presentation about people fell on deaf ears. And that scares me. Because how much more important are people than butterflies? A lot of times people say, don't make it about race. I do my best not to, because whoever's in power, I have to deal with. First time I met this man, I told him, I don't trust you and don't know if I ever will. But you hold that seat, you're the manager of this city, and I'm gonna have to work with you regardless of whoever else sits in that seat. I tell that story often, because it was a lot to get past. And it wasn't just because of his unrelenting support, it was because the genuine nature of it. I spoke to quite a few of the city council over time. And I'm not sure what this community is, is facing in every area, but I do know that we have to better understand, learn of and better understand those things, or this community will not make it. This, this is just little old me saying this. But this is the only community I've lived in, and I say this a lot, that has international ties. But such a lack of understanding of itself, that it still believes that it, it survives off corn and wheat. Notre Dame University produces, well, has produced and, and is on track to begin producing. Again, some of the greatest students and leaders known. And we outsource all of that. It goes somewhere else. They get a four-year degree, some go to Kish for two years, then do a four-year degree, some get their masters and doctors, but they leave. That, that's not a, that don't seem like a problem to the community, because, well, we got the money out while they were NIU, at NIU. But what about long-term? What about the portion of this city that's not NIU? That's the biggest concern, because that's where our problems are. Yeah, you got the occasional fighting, all this stuff going on with the kids on college campus. But it's those who wanna grow roots that can't grow roots because of the transient nature of this community and the failure to meet the needs of that area of this community. We the only community with a college of, of that size that has one shelter that does not serve you unless you've been here more than a year. So what are we telling people? And we continue to throw fun, money into any and everything. But the things that help people grow roots. Transient people are transient because they're leaving somewhere to find a better life somewhere else. And DeKalb is telling them, that's not here. Who wants to be homeless for a year before they can get help? Yeah, Hope Haven does great work in some areas. But at some point, we have to start addressing the fact that there's people that Hope Haven does not and cannot serve. When and how do we do that? There's gonna be some things coming before the city council in time that may not be favorable, may not be something we wanna hear as a reality. Because right now, there's great growth with Farrar, Rhyder and all these other companies coming here. And there's great opportunity for jobs. You know, in, in, in our mind, that translates to roots. But it's, it doesn't translate to roots when you have other factors like associations that can bar you from living here. With just the struggle of opinion and a mental decision. So my ask, and this was not even a part of my whole thing, I had my fully free information to introduce. But my whole thing that I'm asking the council is for each ward to hold a public meeting, at least monthly, to get to know your constituents. Some of the wards are very easy to handle. You get calls and you talk to your constituents on a regular, got great relationships with a lot of them. But have you met and touched the majority of them? Have you heard their need? One, two, or the, I'm not sure exactly. Ward six, I think Verbic is one of them, but I know Carolyn has Ward one. What's the ward that abuts to yours with AGM?
I think, yeah, seven.
Seven.
Alderman favors.
Not present. So I'm gonna wrap up now, but those meetings, getting to know those constituents and bringing that knowledge back to decisions on budget, decisions on where you'll invest socially is important. And I, like I said, I try not to bring up race, but I walked, I was sitting in the room and realized that I'm the only, you were standing right, chief, you were standing right.
No.
Okay.
Black woman.
Huh?
Black woman.
Okay, so. I just had to ask, I didn't wanna just throw that out there, I didn't never ask that question. So, and I looked around, I realized I was the only black face, and I know chief is too, in this room. But it, it didn't make me uncomfortable, because I know majority of the people here. But it discouraged me in a, in a, in a serious way. Serious way. Because for this city to be as broad, as it, broad as it is in talent, diversity of people, idea and things like that, the council fails to reflect that. And that's not your fault, because you did what you had to do, you stepped up, you ran, you won, and you've been doing your job. But when you leave, who's gonna do that job? And what would that look like? Who will you turn your seat over to, to represent a more reflective community? I'll, I'll stop there.
Appreciate it, Ernell. All right, any other public participation? No, all right. Moving on to agenda item D, considerations. Consideration of key assumptions for the fiscal year 2022 city budget. City manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ernell. Words to think about and, and to act on, and I appreciate you coming in tonight. So the focus tonight is, is billed in our, our notices is taking stock of where we are and where we think we will be in general terms in fiscal year 22. And for people who are watching, tuning in tonight, our fiscal year goes with the calendar year. So we've got a few months to put together a budget. And usually the kickoff to that process is a joint meeting where the city manager throws up some, some issues and concerns and, and, and a, a con, some concepts about how revenues might, might be, as Ernell said, invested and, and how spending might occur across the various city departments, particularly those in the general fund, which is the funding source for our operating departments, which, as I mentioned in the background, three years now. That's, that's the fund that most people rub up against in fire and police and public works and all the other city departments. So unless you want me to go in another direction, which will be a problem with all this background, that's how I'm gonna proceed tonight. I'd like to talk for a little bit and get us to a point, at least through the general fund. And then if it's agreeable to the FAC and to the council, then we'll have some Q and A and then move on to some capital funds and to fund and talk about this budget schedule from here. Is that agreeable to everybody? Okay. So nineteen pages of single-spaced numbers, and you survived and got here after reading all of that. But it represents, as I know you all are aware, a lot of thought and, and work on the part of, of everybody in this room. And I, I hit you with the, the, the biggest firework of all on the second page, which is to show you something like a prediction of how revenues and expenditures might look over the next three fiscal years, including FY22. So I'm gonna come back to this, but I, I did want you to see that we're, we're not just looking over the next 12 months. We're looking further down the way, in no small part because something I wanna settle on a little bit tonight. The federal government, for the first time in probably the memory of anybody here, unless you're around for revenue sharing in the seventies, has been, has given substantial money to cities like ours, but I'll speak of our city. And the money has certain prescriptive parameters and we intend to meet those guidelines and to faithfully report to, to the federal government on those. But they definitely give us an opportunity to do some things we haven't been able to do for many, many years. So we'll, we'll get to that. A couple of things to start off in the revenue and the expenditure assumptions for the general fund. I am assuming that there will be no further COVID-related restrictions on business and employment. Now that, you know, we're, we're living day-to-day right now, but I, I think that's a safe assumption, but we shall see. But that's, nothing else is baked into the, the numbers, if that's the case. And I, I should mention, and you know this from these sessions over the last couple of years, some really important tax data is still not available to us, which would be very helpful in making predictions about revenues. So we're working off of May numbers on, on the key sales and use tax categories. And that's, you know, not even two, two, first two quarters, and most companies wouldn't even begin the process if that was the case. But we, we're in the public domain, we wanna get the public involved, we wanna get you involved, we wanna start talking about these things. So we're doing a little bit of spitballing, I have to be honest. And then we get a little further into the late summer, early fall. And we eventually get to a meeting with the finance advisory committee in mid-October. And at that time, you know, the, the, things are starting to get cemented. We do have the first probably seven months anyway, maybe even in some categories, eight full months. And that, that gets us to the finish line. So that's, that's just by way of some caveats for what I'm gonna say from here. All right, let's, let's dig in, unless somebody wants me to stop here, I'm just gonna start roaring through some revenue categories. And as I'm going along, I'm also gonna suggest the things that we still need to do before we can get to an action agenda. And one of those may be the most important for people who live and, and own property, private property, a home, a business in this town, and that's the property tax. So again, this year, what I'm proposing, and what I think is unavoidable, is that all of our property tax that the council will ultimately levy with the advice and guidance of the finance advisory committee will be used for the, to offset the fire and police pension obligations. We talked about this in the past and I, I could talk about it again, but there's a fair amount of background here. And I played out on page three in your background, the, the trends that are happening there. I, I have to say, we have strong allies in trying to get the legislature to come up with an actuarial method that will get us away from this steep ramp every year of putting more. And it's like playing Texas Hold'em and you never get to enjoy the pot. You, you just keep throwing your chips in the middle, every year, all of it. And we're still short. This year, predicting will be just under $1.3 million short. We have to take out of sales and use tax, it could be used somewhere else. That was the same last year. Last year, we did not ask our, our taxpayers to pay a proportional share, even though it would be small, of the library debt, which we took on, just under $500,000. And I'm asking that of you again, because I don't see any way that we can make our rate go down if we include that. And why do I say that? Well, you know the formula, the three-legged stool. So you've got the community-wide EAV and you've got a levy from the city and that gives you a rate. Happily, I'm, I'm, I can say that some of the new developments on the south part of town is, is, has materialized. In particular, the Farrar projects, the distribution center and the PAC Center. Both will fill in nicely in our, our community-wide EAV this year for taxes to be paid in 2022, so we can count on that and that will affect how we levy. Facebook, no, not yet. The develop, developer incentive, it's called, is still in play, because other than a few smaller buildings, the data hall, the big generator of, of new EAV for our tax base is not gonna be occupied until the end of next year. And occupancy is the key, that's the trigger. If you're a township assessor or you're the county supervisor of assessments, that's what they follow. So even, even the dollars that went into the purchase of those 505 acres, the $40 million cannot be counted, a third of that can't be counted until an occupancy occurs. And I think we have a, a case next year for at least getting the industrial value of the land on our EAV. And that will make a, a big difference. But we don't have that, so I'm only figuring about twenty, a little over 25 and a half million dollars in new construction. Well, last year was 2.5. Not bad, but there, there are other things in play here. We have a multiplier which is lower, and so again, we're, we're looking to keep the rate going down slightly and to be a leader in that respect. We will come back to this discussion. At this point, I, I just suggested how you might arrive at a rate with what I have here. I'm thinking the new construction might go up a little bit for what we were able to claim before September 1st, which is usually when the books get closed and they start thinking about assessment notices and so forth that come out usually end of October, early November. So a lot of this is still to come, but, so I'm not gonna make a recommendation, that's what we do to the finance advisory committee at their October meeting. And then eventually, there's a discussion and a recommendation and I bring it to you. And then we have our levy discussion at the end of October, early November. So enough, I, I think on the, on the property tax, unless you'd like to go a little deeper into the weeds on that. Okay, okay. So let's look at some of the other general fund revenue streams. Sales and use taxes, and I'm gonna get to the federal money, that's gonna be on the spending side. We'll touch on that, though. Sales and use taxes, another enormous category. And by the way, when we had our bond reassessment, the, the rating reassessment last year, when we were doing our, our, our swoop and toss on, on the, the debt that we had and, and we had a downgrade by, by a mark. We were told that, boy, you're pretty solid on your sales and use taxes and your governmental revenues, that's all good, but your property tax is challenged by the demands downstate. So until that can be solved, we, we can't heavily weight the sales and use taxes. Figuring about a little over a 4% increase. Now, you'll recall, it was just two meetings ago. It was July 12th meeting, that we amended the budget, and this was good news. We were so conservative in giving birth to the FY21 budget back, back in November and December last year. And remember that, we were right in the depth of COVID. We didn't know, we were talking about the first quarter, maybe the second quarter climbing out. If vaccinations were calm, vaccinations weren't out there in the street. We really underplayed what we thought our revenue would be. So all we did was to go in there in, in the first meeting in July and just pump it up to where we think a reasonable projection would be. And so that, that was a difference of about $2 million in general operating revenue. And so the, the difference that we're looking for is more normal year-to-year on sales and use taxes. That, that trend, around 4% is about right. Grocery receipts, that, that includes our utility taxes. There is about a 3.4% difference at this point, we may see a little bit more. There is a utility tax, the electrical tax is to be shared with Farrar. They're not gonna be a full year in, so I think it may be next year, but we have some room in that particular line item. Intergovernmental revenues, well, you saw that, or maybe you didn't see, but there was a change officially now in our population. We went from 44,030 to 40,290, a drop of 3,740 persons in the city of DeKalb in the last 10 years, which is about an 8.5% drop. That affects our per capita revenues. And one of the biggest and most important is our share of the state income tax. Another one is the local use tax. And what I projected is, and before we got this, we were baking in something not unlike this. We were hoping to hit 40 and we, we have a floor there of at least 40,000, not much more. So I, we're not gonna probably make other changes to what we project in those particular line items. Local use taxes, for those that don't recall, it's, it captures internet sales. And they were up pretty substantially last year, for all the obvious reasons. People were staying home and buying stuff, a lot of stuff on, online. And so we got credit for that. Where you, you booked the sale in 60115 and that helped us. And that's continuing to rise, it's not quite as dramatic as it was, but it's, it's going up. So that, I think we're covered there as well. But we have to get to work, there's another piece to this, and that's the political piece. And we'll be getting to you as soon as we can, what we've know of the ward populations by U.S. Constitution and the state constitution. We, the wards have to be essentially equal, not to the person, but we may have to jiggle. I don't know if we will or not in, in any substantial way, but we'll bring that to you, it's your obligation to make those adjustments as needed. Okay, questions? Okay, revenues, the others are, are smaller. The permits were up pretty dramatically and we can thank Facebook and Farrar for that. And we continue to see growth there. And we have another company coming in of a scraping ground in the last week. And they're interested in getting in within the next 12 months, much like Farrar was, and that's good. And we're hoping And we're hoping we will hear some good news on the south side of Gurler sometime in September, or sometime this fall, the end of this quarter. That will promise some new permitting and a lot of other things, more expansion of the tax base. Now, let's get to the American Recovery Act. So I don't know how many of you have been reading some of the guidance that's been circulating. Certainly, the Illinois Municipal League has been very dutiful in getting that out. We're getting from the U.S. Treasury guidance still, but I'm happy to say, probably a couple months ago, we got some essential guidance in a couple key areas. And one of those is, there was, let me step back. In 2021, there was something called the CARES Act, and that was totally focused on filling holes in municipal and other public budgets. It wasn't prospective. It wasn't looking forward to what can you be doing to help underserved, what can you be doing to help neighborhoods and so forth, and infrastructure. It was mostly about filling holes that were caused by the fact that we had a lot of, a lot of people who were, in the public sector now, I'm talking about, firemen, policemen, public works employees in particular, who were putting a lot of overtime, and budgets were cut or frozen like ours were. And so how are you going to get the job done? And people were still, of course, demanding service, so how are we going to get bodies there? We have to pay people, how are we going to do that? A lot of overtime, and that was a big part of it. The American Recovery Act is partly about revenue that was lost, but it's also prospective, and a greater part of the language of the act is forward-looking, and it's particularly so because in larger cities, there are larger populations who not only were screaming for service, but there are also people who lost, a lot of people lost their jobs, proportionally more than here, but we lost jobs here, too. So what do you do to, you know, make amends for that? Well, on the revenue recovery side, actually, I think it's, I haven't always been impressed with what comes out of Washington, but I think it was, considering this task and the thousands of municipal, county, and state governments that it had to deal with, I think it was about the right approach. They basically said, look, if it had been for COVID, in most cases, most cases, communities, counties, states, were, at the end of 2019, making pretty good progress coming out of, like us, 10 years of a slump. And there is every reason to believe, barring something like COVID, that those inclines on the revenue streams were going to continue. So they said, here's a formula for you. We're going to, we're going to estimate what that would be, and they gave us a factor. They didn't want every, every community coming in and saying, well, I've got this calculation here, and it shows that we were down $6 million or whatever. And then they'd have to have somebody in Washington check that out, times 10,000. So they just said, there's one formula, it works for everybody. And for us, it worked pretty well. That formula allowed us to make up for about, the loss of about $4.2 million. Because but for, if you take out the CARES Act money, thank you, 1.8 million, but you can't count it twice, and you take out transfers in, that's, you know, some people did it, some people didn't, the difference between where we ended up and where we could have been was about 4.2 million, using their factor. So part of what you see coming into the general fund at the, oh, and by the way, it's important to note, none of these federal monies coming our way can be dumped into the reserve, general fund reserve or any reserve, because of some, a pretty fair assumption that some people would probably fill reserves and not do other things with the money. So let's get it to work. So you put it at the top of the hopper, I guess you would say, and it comes through the departments, then, goes out through fire, police, public works, to services, and it helps with that. And if at the end of the year, there's some surplus, that can stay in your reserve. So we're following the rules. And how do we identify what that number should be for FY22? We froze, so the CARES Act paid for people who were on, who were here, live bodies, right? But then there were the 12 bodies that we never got to hire that could have been here, but because they weren't here, there was overtime and a lot of that. So that came to a total of about $1.3 million. That's what we're bringing in, proposing to bring into the general fund in FY21 or '22. Does that make some sense? Okay. All right. But this is, I'm stressing this because the American Rescue Plan funding is critical looking forward as well, because it can be used for other things, and we'll be talking about that when we get out of the general fund. But it is important. It also gives us an opportunity to do some things that we've been kicking down the road for years, both fire and police side. And I can get into details on that, but I laid it out for you, and I'll answer any questions you may have as we go along. I'm going to pull up for a minute. So on the spending side, I touched personnel side. The other categories, commodities and contractual services, not much of an increase, equipment, the difference is about $1,200. Transfers out, let me just hit that, and then I'll stop for a minute. You know, last year, we scooped and tossed our debt service to the end of the term of that, of those four different GO bonds. But the nice thing was, we didn't have to dip into the reserve to keep our services going. That only bought us a year, and this is the year we don't have to do that. In '22, the debt comes, the debt obligation comes back, we have to pay it, hence the big bump there. We're back up at $1.8 million and then some. So that's, that's why that is high, but it's not, it wasn't unforeseen, is what we expected. You know, offsetting that is, you saw what I said earlier, Farrar frankly offsets a large part of that in terms of coming up with the general fund debt service. So, well done. It worked. It was a guess, but it worked. So thank you for that. All right. Stop. Questions?
Let's just go ahead and make it an open conversation, so. Saw Tom reaching for his mic. No?
Thank you. Just a couple of general comments.
Sure.
You know, the role of the Finance Advisory Committee is advisory, right? It serves at the behest of the city council, and the questions and the assignments that you give us, and the questions that you would like further information about collectively are part of our assignments, right? So just from an overview standpoint, I think the overview looks relatively good from a community perspective, going back a few years. It looks much better than the conversations we were having in early '20. And, you know, one of the primary objectives and assumptions that the Finance Advisory Committee had discussed year after year after year was to retain and attain that 25% general fund balance, and that was a long-term struggle, well over 10 years, for us to recoup and get to the point where now we're looking at a fund balance that is above that level and looks like it's sustainable for a period of time. The pension obligation issue remains significant, and I would hope at some point we would come back to discuss if there are dollars available, that that is an opportunity to try and address, or maybe over and above what the minimum requirements have been. And the other long-term liability that exists are the roads, construction costs, that we have really struggled with many years, about trying to get up to a $3 or $4 million regular annual commitment to streets and roads. And I know the people I talked to would like to see that, get back to that and more. So for long-term commitments that we can discuss at a future point, those would be two major areas. I think it's great to get to multiple years. We've talked about trying to get back to a multi-year budget in the past. It was a current year plus four, so there was a five-year rolling forward budget, which helped under capital cost planning and vehicles and so forth. So that's a step in the right direction. The property tax aspect of the pension discussion will certainly be enhanced, not only with Farrar, but with Facebook, and the roll-off of TIF, all right? TIF surplus in here is still generating $270,000, more or less, and the other half, the other 50% that you're not enjoying today, will come back to you at the end of next year. I guess we have one more year of revenue, '22, and then it falls off. The good part of that, it all comes back to property tax income, right? So that reduces the deficit related to pension obligations, and with Facebook rolling in, it gives you an opportunity to really take that number from a million-three deficit near, much nearer to zero, to get to a balanced pension obligation on a go-forward basis, right? So those are things I see in here. Other conversations about debt and leasing and so forth can come at a future time, I think. So those are just general comments. I have some very specific questions that we'll come back to.
Mayor, may I just add one thing?
Absolutely.
And there's one other thing, I don't know if you noticed, Tom, but there's so much here, but it occurred to me as I was playing with some of the Excel spreadsheets, that one other problem that, it's an upheaval mine, and that is how much the general fund in DeKalb has been supported by other funds that have other needs as well, and the water fund was one of those. So what I show in the last two years, if you go back to that on page two, what I've shown is that the, as far as transfers in are concerned, you see a drop off in '23 and '24. We're, '24 is also figuring in the fact that the ARP money is basically gone at that point. But we're, right now, we're bringing in $311,000 from the water fund to pay for whatever the general fund pays for. And so I'd like to get through the next year, maybe a year and a half, and then start pushing that back, give it back. And so that's figured in there, too. I didn't make a big deal out of it, but I'm happy to say that's, that's within sight, and hopefully that can be done. So any other questions? Thank you, Tom, for the, if you want me to...
Couple other more specific questions.
I just had a couple, since I'm new to this. You just threw a lot at me. Just real quick, so when you were talking about the intergovernmental revenues, I believe it was, you actually projected that we'd be at 40,000, not knowing what the census was going to be? That was just a hunch? Or is it, those numbers came in, and then you adjusted?
Well, you know, we were following a census collection, I guess you'd call it, and we had a couple people doing that a good part of their time, and we knew where, we had holes, and people weren't responding. And so we, it was within 500 or so, probably where we were. It wasn't all that scientific, but it wasn't that wild either, to guess that.
So it's kind of like poll watching in a way?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. If we could collect, if we could stroke a check and pay for the pension fund, is there a dollar amount? Or is it just that we're being assessed every year and contributing to a larger monster?
Well, if you all had the actuary reports, which showed what the obligation is, yeah, if we had $40 million in one fund, and a little bit more in another, we could do, actually, it's a lot more than that. So we'll not, we're not going to get there in 2040. If that doesn't change, and we'll probably not all be here, I won't be here, but, or she wouldn't want to know me if I was.
You wouldn't know me if you were.
Yeah, I wouldn't know you anyway. But the, the city, so it's eating us up. I mean, I know what Tom's saying, like, if we had regular debt, and we could predict that the rate doesn't change, we know what it's going to be. This changes every year. It goes higher. So, and, and that's not counting just the life activity of the people who are covered by the pensions. We could have a year of no major illnesses, nobody, you know, and it doesn't matter, you know, pensions, because of this, this race to get to 2040 and get to 90% funding, and we're at 40, oh, 40s, we're not going to get there. If we don't get relief in the next five years, now you saw, it looks pretty darn good going out over five years, but if we don't get relief, this is still going to start going half again as much almost every year. So it's intolerable, cannot be borne, but I can't say in my, my public experience that the state legislature acts quickly. And they've had this on their plate, and every year, they've got other things in the top one, two, and three things they want to get done. So there's two, two different sessions, obviously, once the veto session, although lately we've been doing a lot more than that. But in the spring session, that's where, so this spring, we're looking for that. We have allies amongst firemen and policemen who are involved in the day-to-day with the pension funds, downstate and also locally. We still don't, we haven't, there were going to be two benefits. One is we get to some kind of an actuarial method that would at least flatten the ramp, instead of going to 40, and maybe go like that. And there was talk in the legislature, well, let's kick it down the road. Surprise, surprise. Let's go to 2060. That would help a little. It'd help for another 10 years. There'd still be steep rises, but not as steep, but then after that, it starts, for us, it would feel like we have to get back into the supersonic ramp. The other thing was, we hope to get an advantage by the consolidation of the, all the hundreds of small pension boards, each one having their own fiduciary advisor and fund managers and so forth, and, you know, it'd be all consolidated. Well, we haven't realized that yet. I think the fire fund will definitely get there faster, and we'll do that in '22. Police, I think, are, have taken the state to court on this, so I don't know where that will end up. But, so without that, we don't even get to, that was going to be like a 3% benefit to us, not a lot, but some savings. But just think about this, when the property tax was imposed here, and I'm a historian, I can't remember when that was, it was supposed to pay for operations and the benefit packages that go with those, and those have grown, obviously, over time. But you'd think we'd have a little something for fire, police, and public work, say, not, you know, shirts like me, but, you know, people are out there every day. Zip! And we still owe $1.3 million. It's an outrage. You can see, I easily get going on this. It is simply an outrage. So is there a quick fix? I wish there was. I wish we could just start writing some big checks, and we could do that, but then what advantage would we have over the next couple of years if we do that, and then we don't have some other things, and we're back to where we're, you know, kicking them?
Right. I was just more curious, is it like traditional debt, where if you accelerate your payments, your principal, that you're actually going to lower the obligation out of your pocket in the form of interest over time?
If we were closer, if we were closer and could actually, say we were 70% funded, that might make some sense.
Gotcha, okay.
But then, what do you, how are you going to feel when the state finally acts? Let's say they act in the next four or five years.
Yeah, and they...
You feel like fools.
Yeah, they relieve the burden on everybody. I know, right. So strategically, it doesn't make sense to accelerate. We should do the bare minimum every time. Yeah, okay. All right. Council, any comments, questions, before we move into Tom's deep dive? And I've seen him with numbers before. All right, Tom, it's all you.
Thank you. Just a couple clarifications. The library debt aspect of this, I guess that's left over from the expansion, and it came back to the city rather than their books. There had to be some rationalization about why we collectively did that.
I wasn't there... I wasn't there. 2013, you know, the bond, that I, I really, I haven't done research on it because my blood pressure's high enough.
There is no incremental revenue that we are using on their, on their behalf.
No.
So it's just a pure add-on to the city budget.
It is. Yeah, I think it was...
Debt.
You know, it was, my understanding, some of you may have been here, my understanding was that there was some additional money they needed to raise, and so the city council stepped up and said, well, we'll cover that. And hence the 500,000, roughly, $495,000. So, and I'm glad, beautiful building, here we are.
Right.
But we go on for another 10 years, and I think, according to Emily, their debt service is, is paid.
Okay. From a standpoint of headcount for the assumptions, you talk about the 12 frozen heads, if you will, those positions that were never added back.
Yeah.
And are those all in the upcoming budget for '22?
Yes.
All 12?
Yes.
And those are, are those incremental positions to '19 budget? Or are they just replacements bringing us back to staffing levels?
Yeah, they'd be filling, well, we had planned on, let me put it this way, see if that answers your question. We planned on hiring them in the first or at the latest second quarter of 2020, if there had been no COVID. And so that would have been incremental to '19. Does that make sense to you?
Okay, so the headcount's incremental to '19's headcount.
Yeah. Well, I'm trying to, it's incremental because they were frozen, now we're adding them. But some of those positions were frozen for more than one year.
Yeah.
They were frozen for several years.
Okay.
So, yeah, carry forward.
Just a reason for asking, just make sure that we're covered.
Yeah.
From a wage standpoint, I see it's up 4%. And I thought 12 positions is like 4% or 5% of our total headcount. So, plus our normal wage increases and so forth. So that was just the nature of the question.
That's the number, yeah, right.
Counsel?
For now. Can I, can I say something else? It's, you know, there's more than, obviously, a numbers chase. Services, that's been our focus. We did a fire contract to get to over four years, a level of, of staffing that would give us that extra rider on each, each shift. And, and it would be three more shifts times three. It would be nine hires over four years. And that's to get to the point where we just meet the lowest threshold the DNFPA set for people responding. So there are times when we've jumped one on an ambulance, two on an engine. And last fall, leading into this, we had one on an engine and one on an ambulance going to a major fire call. So Sycamore helped us, you know, until we could get enough people. But we had two other ambulances that were at accident scenes and an engine, all doing, you know, whatever it was, safety first. So we, we thought, enough, we're done with this. And we're going to, we're going to do better. This gives us a chance to accelerate that. Now, the other thing was, by doing that, we were calling back every, every major call. So we had about $1.2 million in overtime in '21, and we're right now on a path to do that, because we haven't been able, we've had some, some retirements, some people moving to other lines of work, both in fire and police. And when you do that, you're, we were actually taking a step back for every step forward. And so this year, we haven't yet realized the minimums we thought we would be at, like in a fire contract and also in a police contract. So the next, happily, the next few months, we have been working very closely with the Fire and Police Commission, and they've been working overtime with us. Thanks to Michelle Anderson in the back, working in HR to, to accelerate the hiring process, so we can start filling positions and cut down on overtime, but also provide better service. That's, that's the key.
Other questions?
Okay. You want to move into capital, or do you want to linger on the general, whatever you want to do? Okay. We don't have all the capital-oriented funds here, but the ones that, and Tom said it well, the, what do people think about when they think about property taxes, they think about my streets. You're not fixing my street. Now, most people, it hasn't sunk in that we're not getting any property tax for streets, and we're not getting it for operations. But that's, that's what people think. And by the way, I guess if we've all moved to different communities, we think, oh, that's where my property tax ought to go, partly, right? So we, we, three, three years ago, the council and the Finance Advisory Committee spent a long time, and two years ago as well, thinking about how we can attack the slow pace of street maintenance. And some things were done. We raised our local fuel tax money. And then the state's increase also brought in a little bit more to us. And that is shown, and there's, again, a lot of numbers here, but the essence is we're, we were at three-quarters of a million in street maintenance, annual street maintenance spending in 2018. We're up to 2.2 million in the '22 budget. We, we could go more than that, but we are also at work with two major bridge replacements in '22. So some of the motor fuel tax money that we've been stockpiling is going to get sucked into both of those projects. And it's the Lucinda Bridge and North First Street over the Kitch. So we're on, we have to do this on a state schedule. There will be a state letting, and it will happen in the, in the late winter. As soon as the work can start, the work will begin, and it's going to be done by the end of next year. And hence the larger numbers that you see on page 12, first line says bond revenue. That's the, the Build Illinois Bond Program. And we've been getting $967,250. We have one more year of that, and then we get back down. That, that goes away. And so some other sources will carry a part of our street maintenance program. We've been, I hope, definitely alternating most of the street maintenance funding between the motor fuel tax fund, which is Fund 210, and Fund 400. So one year, we go heavy with 210, and the next year with 400, and back and forth, back and forth, so that neither fund takes the big hit every year, or we, we wouldn't go very far. So that's, that's what we're going to do. Next year, we have a more aggressive program in mind. We're going to pick up more alleys, which have been neglected, not because of lack of interest, but because of lack of money. There will also be some other funding, we hope, that comes from, originates at the federal level and comes through the state and comes our way. There are some CDBG money that can be spent in qualified census tracts, and we intend to use that judiciously in those areas. So otherwise, that's really, that's the main, the main work. We've got, next year, most of the financing will be out of Fund 410 for the streets. About 1.7 million of that, 2.2 million. And you notice, we've been, we've been trying to do, we've been knocking out, for, for efficiency's sake, the hence lower, slightly lower price per, per unit, some, some big chunks. First Street now, you've noticed that. And I'm happy to see that contractor's really racing along, and that, that otherwise could have been a disaster. But weather's been good, and a good contractor, and the work's going. Did seventh a couple of years ago. And so two major north, north, south arteries have been done. Next year, in '22, the state of Illinois is going to come through and pave Route 38. And that will also benefit our downtown program, which is going to have to wait. I guess we can make that announcement, Kelsey, that, or do you already know this, that because of some ongoing plan reviews and so forth at the state level, we're, we're running out of time. Actually, we've run out of time. We obviously can't do the downtown streetscape before Corn Fest. And we thought as, as our last gap, we would do it between Monday after Corn Fest and the first hard snow freeze. And we probably could have made it. It's about a two-month job. But there's still some review going on at the state level. And I want to thank the mayor for his help. And Zach Gill is not here tonight, but they, they've been working overtime to try to push this along, but it's, we're not going to get there. So we're going to probably go to bid in December or January, have a letting in whatever that is, February, and then as soon as we can get going in March, late March, get going on that. The paving can't be done until later in May, when the batch plant's open, but we'll get all the concrete work done that we can, with high early concrete, and little tricks of the trade, and get some stuff done. There's some conduit to run and some other things. Because when we're done, it's not only going to be a wider sidewalk downtown, sorry for this sidebar, and the three lanes downtown rather than the four. But we're going to have some, I think, some nice surprises. It's going to be more, more lighting, more, more magic, more street art, whatever. Okay.
And real quick, the High Dot thing, just so everyone knows when he says Route 38, we're talking from the Convocation Center to Corlent. So that's going to be a huge, just as far as beautification, infrastructure improvement of Lincoln Highway, which is a major artery that so many of us take on a regular basis. We'll all be driving on brand-new asphalt by the end of next year.
Okay. I'm going to move to vehicles, if I may, or do you want me to stop?
Go, please.
Okay. All right. So a couple of years ago, we took the plunge and decided to lease some vehicles, five-year leases. The rate's going up, by the way, no surprise. But it's helped. We, we beefed up the equipment fund with a part of that 4-cent increase that the council approved in late 2019. And we, we've made some headway. But that comes with a debt consideration. And also, there's now a, an audit standard where, and Tom, I don't know whether you noticed this, but, so now we have to, in the first year of the lease, we have to record the full value of the cost on our books, rather than spreading that over five years, say, as we thought we could. And that's, that's a new rule. So, and the first year, we've got the, the money and the in and the out, they're roughly the same. But then after that, the lease cost figure in without the revenue dedication above the line. So, but even with that, what we've done to this point, the first two years of leasing, and we've been buying some vehicles outright, too, just balancing what our operating balances in the vehicle fund. On page 16, I've shown you a projection of what our debt would be if we pursued the, in the green on the, about the middle of the page, it says, five additional leases in '22, which propose four, four police explorer vehicles, and one full-size truck for the street department. And then about $150,000 in outright purchases. And we're, and we haven't had the final quote yet, but we think we've got it baked in. And we had our audit firm, Sikkich, do the calculation for us. So it, actually, the overall debt is coming down a little bit, on the capital lease side, because we're also, you know, moving along. We're in our third year now, some of those, so getting, moving along. But we have to keep an eye on this. We, we're, we're, over the next couple of years, the GEO, the general obligation debt is going to start coming off pretty, pretty rapidly, except for the library debt. And we'll get that as, as a benefit in the next five years. And right now, we don't have a plan for a, a large debt package. Heaven knows what comes, but we're not planning on it. We found a way to kind of pay as we go on the street maintenance and some of the general fund expenses and things. So let's keep it going. That's, any questions on that?
Anything airport-related?
Huh?
Airport-related, or is that, I see, airport-related?
I didn't put that in here, but Renee Ryan is here. And so, no, no pain, no gain, right? Isn't that a phrase? So right now, there's a little bit of pain. We have two runways. The longer northeast-southwest runway is the one that we're focusing on, taxiways and runway paving and so forth. We also have a light project that's going on. Both of these have been on our Transportation Improvement Program list for years. And now we've got the federal money, great. But this airport paving project will get to a point where we have to close both runways. The, the longer runway is closed now, big X's in the, in the back, bottom and the top. And the NOTAMs, the notices, have gone, gone out, and they're regularly heated. But the east-west, the original runway, will have at some point to be closed, and we're hoping it's only about 10 working days. They're working very fast out there, doing very well. What slows this down a little bit, the testing is a little more esoteric than the testing that goes on roads. Obviously, you can hit a bump in the road if you're a car, but the plane, you don't want to hit too many bumps in the road. So a lot, it might take five days rather than a couple hours to get the okay. And this is a state, federal-funded project, so another reason for the extra testing. And so when that happens, we're, we have a program with our tenants. We will offset the loss of, of the use of their planes through the, through our, you know, our tenancy. Obviously, they're paying money to be able to use it, so we'll be reimbursing them for a portion of that. And we're, we're making progress. Renee was very instrumental in getting us the ComEd lease, and the helicopter company that's working as a subcontractor to ComEd. And that will help to tune about 25 grand a year. We're talking about some other ideas that may also gain us about that much a year, so we're working on it. Development of the airport will depend on that. Anything, Renee? No? Good. All right. TIF program, I, I didn't spend much time on this, because we, we've been through a lot in the last couple of years. And we've worked with all of our partners in the other taxing districts. And TIF I, this is the last year, as Tom said, that it's active, and there'll be some accrual of revenue that will be realized next year, and then, then it's done, done. There will be an action in December of this year to terminate officially TIF I, which is the original. It was extended a couple times. And other people will take stock of whether that TIF I did all the things that we had hoped for in the original development plan. I think probably came up short. But we'll have other times and places to talk about that. But we have a TIF III, which is just getting going. This is the second full year of some revenue that can be spent. And so we go from TIF I, which, and its peak was, was generating about $7.2 million a year. We were giving half of that away, spreading it to the tax environment, but did 3.6 million. The, the total of the TIF III projected for next year is $450,000. So we can do maybe a couple of, and this is a downtown TIF, for all intents and purposes, from the Lagoon to, oh, just east of 10th Street, where the, where the railroad line crosses Lincoln Highway. That's about the end of it. So there, there are some facade upgrades we can do, some smaller renovations we can do. Right now, we're, we're already tapped out for the year. We're, we're going to bring you one more significant... We're going to bring you one more significant AIP, American, or American, Architectural Improvement Program grant request next meeting, next Monday. And that'll just about be it for the year, just be a little bit left. And that's, that's the TIF. The last thing, I guess, is just the budget schedule. The schedule's on page 19. The council has seen this, and if the committee is okay with these dates, it's the pattern that we've done the last couple of years, where we have, after tonight, and the guidance that we get from the committee and from the council, then we have a couple of months of pretty intense work, and then we come back to you with something like this. And that's going to be in November. And we'll have a couple, I'd say back-to-back, it's, it's the last time we did it all one night, but who knows what happens between now and then. So, we'll do something like on a Monday night, it's an off Monday, and then do it maybe on a Wednesday that week if we have to, and while it's still fresh. And then we go through the levy stuff at the council level and put a bow on it.
So, all comments, questions, council, finance? I had one, the, going back to the library's obligation, because it keeps coming up, it was my recollection that they were supposed to raise the remaining $5 million, or whatever it was, and we needed the loan and the money during that time, was the gap. They didn't raise it, so now, that loan that we gave them is our obligation. Have we had conversations about what if we handed that back? I know that probably sounds, there's no way that would ever happen, but...
No, we haven't. And I'm willing to have those if you want me to.
Yeah, some sort of shared responsibility, or, I don't know. I'm new to this, so I don't know what conversations have already happened.
And I wasn't here when that conversation took place, so we need to see what the understanding was, and be fair, and see if there's some other conversation to follow.
Because you said that continues for 10 more years, right? Or 10 years?
Ours does.
Sorry, the $500,000 roughly to the library is 10 years, yeah. Significant amount of money over a significant amount of time. What about, like, the surpluses? So, it seems like revenues exceed expenditures. What happens with that gap? Goes into the general fund?
For the, oh, year-to-year, the excess of revenues over, yeah, it does. And that's calculated in the page two, the opener, I guess you would say, I show what the trend would be if we do all the things we say we're going to do, and, and there's still reserve there for doing other things that can be done.
And since we've exceeded our fund balance at this point, what is the benefit of continuously putting into the reserves?
Depends who you talk to. If you talk to the bond agencies, eventually, somebody will want to borrow some money, and we're going to want to see an upgrade. Until we get the pension fund issue resolved, or at least in a more stable direction, then I can tell you, it was very clear, they wrote it to us last July, August. It just said, "Your reserve, then, is the most impressive part about your operation." So, where that is shores up the, our financial reputation.
Is there a point of diminishing return on the reserve, though, where they're already impressed, so...
Yeah, I think, well, there are some. The city north of the border here was at 60%, now they're 91%. 50% is probably a point of diminishing returns.
That reserve took quite a while and a great deal of work to just hit the first 25. So, this is not like we're rolling in dough, we just barely have cleared that hurdle for a while, so we're not being stingy or holding back money we could be putting to a good purpose, it's just we've just gotten there, kind of.
But to that point, I mean, there is a point where that excess, I mean, when we talk about roads, we talk about various infrastructure, we talk about staffing of police force, and giving them the tools that they need, and fire, and, yeah, that one point, whatever, million dollars could be definitely used for good use.
So, here's where it all goes away. There was no CARE, there was no CARES Act, because the federal government is based, well, you can always write, they can always print money, but, you know, eventually, things come home to roost, I keep saying that, but it hasn't happened, but it will. And the interest rates, you get, if you ever got into double-digit interest rates again, and the federal government didn't have money to go, or didn't have the consensus to do something like that through the legislative process, then we're on our own, and we've been on our own for a long time, too, this year. And so, that gets sucked away.
Huge believer of cash is king, absolutely. I was just curious when enough is enough.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Morris?
Well, and to address that, originally, the way we had it budgeted, just like you said, the CARES Act and all of that, originally, the way we had it budgeted was for 25% exactly, correct? From last year. So, our original plan last year was to hit the 25% mark. And so, we've been fortunate, and we probably wouldn't have hit this 33% except but for, but for the situation. So, otherwise, we would have been at that perfect 25%. And actually, last year, we had originally, when we were going through this, we had originally considered, like, 28% and budgeting at that 28-ish. And so, we talked about 28%. We were being very conservative there. And then we were like, could we maybe reduce the tax levy, right? Didn't we? And so, that's where we ended up going with that last year, so that we were at 28%. We were like, ah, but could we do 25? And so, we went with the 25 instead, and then made sure that that was going back to the community. And I think, go ahead, Tom.
Just one other further comment. We live in the state of Illinois, which is a whole issue unto itself, and there's a lot of one-time money. There's a lot of one-time money in our numbers. So, as we roll forward on a multi-year look, which would be helpful, that one-time money, which is, if I read those numbers right, is approaching almost $10 million over a two-year period.
10.4.
Some of which are going into operations. So, if you think about that, and you back, if you didn't have, but four, it'd be another million three up, and in two years, that's 2.6, and now your 42% is largely gone. You're going to be fighting that 25%. The other comment about the 25%, if the policy says, for what that's worth today, it's a minimum, it's a minimum. And that is enough, particularly under the conditions we've seen in six and seven. And again, now, it's gone very quickly. I think the very quick reactions, for the good of the community, the very quick reactions of holding constraint on your budget expenses a year ago, when we sat in the same meeting, and if I recall, you had three police, three fire, two city staff, and some other commitments by unions to really hold the line. And that got us to the 25% bogey. And again, but for, the number's coming much better, the $2 million increase in revenues that were unanticipated at the time, all led you to this point. But again, I would, as we look at the next meeting, I think, looking at what is one-time, and what happens with that 42 on a go-forward basis is a, is a good question. How does that really look?
Let's see what they, Tom, and I should have done this earlier, but I get lost in the numbers, too, and the numbers are so sanitary, you know, they're there, and ebbs and flows and so forth. But I'm particularly grateful for the money we got from the federal government because of what our employees have gone through in the last year and a half. And this is not, this is not sappy, emotional, it's just true. They've, they've, you know, those frozen positions made a big difference. We had, and I worry this every day, still do, I saw them jumping into cars, jumping on rigs, hitting the streets, and plowing the snow, and all the rest of that, and they were one-deep, one-deep. I mean, and then try to get people to come back, and tapped, but they kept coming back, and I'm just, I owe a lot to the fidelity, the dedication of our employees to the community. Because without that, it would've been easy to say, oh, no, I can't, I'm tired, you know, don't answer the phone. They answered the call, and I, I can't say enough about that. So, before I get lost in talking about, well, yeah, we filled this, and we did that, I hope you, I know you know, that behind all that, there was a tremendous, there was a lot of sacrifice here, and I'm grateful for it. Just for the record, I'd like to say that.
Any other comments, questions? No?
Last year was really tough on these folks particularly, the department heads, the people out there doing the work every day, they gave up things, they sacrificed just about anything you can think of, not only themselves, but they were passing up and making do. It was really tough. And as Bill has said, but for this federal money, things would look real different right now. So, it's not, I'm sorry, but, you know, those of us who deal with numbers and budgets, you tend to get where you look at things, let's cut what we think the revenue is going to be, and bump up what we think the expenses are going to be. Let's, everything isn't blue sky, and all it takes is one really bad, unexpected thing that none of us can control, and there we are again. So, I agree with you 100%, Bill. I am really grateful to all the people who worked so hard, came up with great ideas, many of them were totally out of the box, and they've really sacrificed a great deal. And I'm sincere, I don't, I'm not trying to butter up any of you, so I do thank you. So, yes, let's hope things go great, and we've got more money to spend to make the community better and help people, and let's make sure we've got a little cushion, so if things go wrong, too.
Anything else, City Manager Nicholas? All right. Yes, Alderwoman Morris?
So, I do just want to note that, you know, we could find ourselves at the end of this budget process in a similar situation that we considered ourselves to be in last year, where when we looked at it, we went, you know, we can afford to bump that 28 down to 25 and save everyone some money. So, you know, with this really reasonable number we've got here, at 38.8%, you know, you could still be very cushiony and take it down to 35, and that could have some really positive outcomes for the entire community.
All right. Hearing no further questions or comments, I would, so Ruth, do I, I need to adj, they need to adjourn, and then we need to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
All right, so Lynn, you're going to have to adjourn your meeting first.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Thank you. We're adjourned.
Got to say, all in favor, say aye.
Oh, sorry, all in favor. Unanimous.
All right, and for council, do you adjourn?
Still moves.
Second?
It was moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay, same sign. We are adjourned.
No.